I guess so. Well, you know. So, I will call a meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order, this July 18th meeting, and I will begin it with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you. So this evening, we actually have a special opportunity. It's not every day that we see one of our town employees call it quits, but I think that we can actually argue this is not one of those nights either. We have someone in the audience this evening who is going on to bigger and better things with her time. And so, we have Donna Wedge, who's with us this evening, who after 15 years of service is deciding to enjoy retirement with her family. So, I see Donna here this evening. I know I see coworkers and friends. Donna, I don't know if you, if I can embarrass you by asking you to come to the podium. I'd love to recognize you on behalf of the Board for your service. So for folks, folks that don't know, Donna has been employed again for 15 years with our town, and the Board of Selectmen wanted to invite you here this evening in front of the community, and not just the community that's here this evening, but folks on TV.
Yes.
Acknowledge that service.
Thank you.
So, I know that everybody's very grateful for what you've done, especially with the conservation commission.
Yeah.
So, Ms. Donna Wedge.
Thank you.
For over 15 years of dedicated service to the town, as the Department of Systems and the Conservation Department.
Yes.
Your professionalism, dedication, and integrity have been a credit to yourself and the entire town of North Andover. Thank you on behalf of the town of North Andover, and the best to you in your retirement. Given this day, July 18th, on behalf of the Board.
Thank you.
So, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
If you'd like to say some words, I don't know if you want to hear some grievances.
Well, over the years, we've had a lot of fun with it. I've enjoyed working with the town of North Andover 15 years. Sometimes it's been fun. It's very busy in Andover, but we're always going, going, going. So, it's busy, so we keep busy, and it keeps you going. So, it's been, it's been fun for 15 years. I've enjoyed it.
Any big plans?
Retirement?
Yeah.
Yeah, going places. I got a bucket list.
So, Kenny, in other words, the vacation's over, buddy.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
So, we also have in our packet this evening, a 2017 summer at the Stevens Library. I don't know if there are any questions about that. I'm gonna pull that up. I don't think I had any questions. I don't know if anybody else has any issues before I go into detail.
A lot of cool events going on there, and people should check it out.
Absolutely.
That was my go-to place when I was a kid, in the summertimes.
Nope, they didn't. So, I will go. I'll go and do that. So for the community to know, the Stevens, Stevens Memorial Library, let's put out their, put out their summer, the superintendent put out their summer challenge. So, welcome to the North Andover Public School Summer Reading Challenge. So, an announcement from the superintendent says, "This year's Summer Reading Challenge celebrates the 10th anniversary of the implementation of building respectful communities committee, the community committees raise respect, achievement, inclusion, service, and empathy values and connects to the Massachusetts Summer Reading theme of Build a Better World." So, the superintendent has asked students to select a book to read from the Great Appropriate List, which she's provided to all families, and after they've read the book, to use a link that's been provided to answer questions and to submit their entry. Entries are due by September 15th, and winners of this program will be announced at the end of September with prizes that will include a Stachis lunch delivered by the Superintendent of Schools or a Scholastic book of their choice. The North Andover High School reading list is included in our packet. For anybody interested in the reading list that would like to follow, they can go and check out our agenda on the town website. Any other communications or announcements from the Board?
Just with regards to the farmer's market that we've had for the last three weeks, I believe, or four weeks.
Four.
It's been, if anybody hasn't had a chance to go down on Main Street on Sundays between 10:00 and 2:00, and check out the farmer's market, it's been a really fantastic gathering so far. It's become not only a farmer's market, but a gathering place for people to meet and talk and socialize a little bit, but there's the vendors there have been fantastic. They have all kinds of fruits and vegetables, fresh fish, meats, just about something for everybody. So, I would highly recommend, if you haven't got a chance to check it out, to check it out. So, it's every Sunday until October 8th, including October 8th, from 10:00 to 2:00. And really, I encourage people to go to check it out.
It'd be remiss if I did not acknowledge that Selectman Valancourt has been down there every weekend, in the morning and the afternoon, living up to the reputation that people have who own trucks, which is, they will be recruited for anything. And to Selectman Keen, who's recruited her family right down to her third-grade daughter to do the volunteer work. So, it's been a very fun experience, and I hope businesses have enjoyed that. In my enthusiasm to start the meeting, I did skip over the approval of the minutes from our June 9th meeting, open session. And so, I would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
Mr. Chair, I'll motion to accept the minutes from June 19, 2017, as written.
Motion made. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Minutes pass. We now have a poll petition from National Grid. National Grid has submitted a poll petition for Morningside Lane and Meadowview Road. And in order to move forward, we have to open a public hearing where National Grid will present.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to open the public hearing to receive comments on proposed National Grid poll petition for Morningside Lane and Meadowview Road.
You have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are in our public hearing. And so, we got someone from National Grid this evening.
Good evening. Michelle Stacey, I'm a representative for National Grid. It's not a poll petition. We're petitioning to change the primary underground wire. So, I just, we're not putting any polls, so I just want to make sure that...
It's called a poll petition, but the existing documents support that it's currently, the wires are currently underground, and you're replacing them to make it easier
Yes.
in the future for when there's power outages to address any problems.
Yes, it's an old service, and people are losing power and flickering lights, and they're gonna replace the primary wire to keep that from happening.
Okay.
And what's the, a couple of questions. What's the anticipated time interval it's gonna take to do this? And what's the cut of the street? How much of the street will be cut?
They're gonna direct, directional drill only in one section, the corner Woodcrest and Meadowview, and then they're gonna pull through.
Pull it, okay.
With the conduit. They're not gonna pull out the old, they're just gonna snake it in, and then they'll transfer the service to the new conduit and primary.
Okay. So, what's the anticipated amount of time?
I'm not exactly sure, but he said August 7th, they're gonna start the directional drilling. They have to wait for a civil crew to be available. Once they get them, Chris Wellington, I can give you his information, he can answer the timeframe and how much they'll dig up from the ground and what needs to be done after the trenching.
I think the Assistant Town Manager as well, first with Mr. Wellington, right? You know, you...
Actually, no, it's the first time I've heard it.
Oh, you don't? Okay.
He's our, he's the senior program manager for the underground.
Okay.
He's a great guy.
But what's the, like, the ballpark? Is it a day or two, three days? Is it a week?
I would say at least a week, maybe.
A week, okay.
Polling and drilling.
But the only interruption in the roadway is in one spot.
That's what he said, yeah. He shows it right here. I can, I can leave this with you, too. It's just one section.
Okay, I think we actually have that, yeah. I just want to clarify. Okay, that answers my questions.
Has there been a frequent amount of outages in that area?
Yes.
Is that why?
I believe it's been a big issue.
I think we have some neighbors here to attest to that.
Yeah, it's been a big issue.
Serious outages a year, and minor outages sporadic, but you can, once, you can, once a month, once, seven, six weeks, you know, it's always at the same spot. I'm saying it.
Yeah. It's an old service. Yeah.
May I ask a question?
Are you, are you done with your presentation?
Yes.
And does anybody else from the Board have any questions? Sir, if you'd like to approach the mic, then, and state your name.
Yeah, my question is about the directional drilling. I mean...
Mike, you need to state, you gotta give your name and address.
Oh, yeah. Michael McPartlin, 99 Meadowview Road. A few of us have recently put in new driveways. Understand directional drilling, you do not have to dig, right? So, can we request that you directional drill beneath the driveway?
You can request. I can bring it to Chris, and I think because they are directional drilling, they're gonna be pulling it, I'm not sure there's gonna be a lot of disruption, because they're not gonna trench the entire street.
They don't have to trench the street.
They're gonna pull it through.
Pull it through, but they still have to push the pipe through the...
Pipe's already in the ground, right?
No, there's no conduit. There is no conduit.
And the primary at the same time.
Okay, but what, but what I thought I understood from your presentation was they're willing to drill in one place. Did I misunderstand?
That's beneath the road.
Yes.
Yeah, I understand. But along the property line and through the driveways? My request is that they directional drill. I have a lot of water problems on my property, and I don't want them disturbing my driveway.
Anything that they do disturb, if they do disturb anything, they will replace it.
I understand that. And they did that when they put the road in just last year, and they had to come back and redo it. Fortunately, I was home, and it rained, and I had a flood in my basement as a result. It's tricky thing to get the elevations right, and if somebody doesn't understand that, and I'm not there, it won't happen. So, my request, again, is to directional drill beneath the driveway.
So, maybe a misunderstanding here, but I thought you said there's gonna be one, one drill location, and then it's just gonna be pulled through. There wouldn't be disruptions to anybody else's property.
It shouldn't.
There shouldn't be. Shouldn't be and isn't is two different things. We, I guess what I'd like to hear is that it isn't going to be...
The letter states clearly that they're, they're gonna dig a trench along the property lines, and obviously, they gotta get underneath the driveways.
Chris, if you, you're interested in the directional drilling, did you talk to Chris Wellington?
I spoke with one fellow who left a tag on our, I forget his name.
Yeah.
Yeah, he said that it probably could be done, and I just want to make an official request for that to be done that way.
Yeah, probably and definitely not, very, two different, very different things.
Why?
So, I think we need very clear direction and clarification on that, whether or not the driveways are gonna be interrupted or breached, or they're just gonna pull right underneath them, and there's gonna be no disturbance.
But don't, but they, but what they need to get permission?
To step on his private property. We're talking about what's going on for the town, but we cannot give carte blanche for someone to go on someone's private property. So, if they were to disrupt...
Well, there's an easement, most likely.
There is an easement. Excuse me.
Can you go and take us so the mic can hear you?
Sure. Yeah, he needs, wherever it is now, it would be an easement for that, already set in for one place at the first time.
Okay, that, I'm sorry, that's, that's right, but even just out of common courtesy, though, you just, I would think that you would discuss with the homeowner if you were going to...
It sounds like there's been notifications left, right?
I'm sorry?
It sounds like there's already been notifications left?
Yes.
I know, but he's saying he doesn't want it. So, I think now that we've got to have further communication.
I don't want them to dig the driveway.
I understand.
I don't see the need.
I, I understand what you're saying.
Thinking directional drill under the driveway.
And that's what I'm just trying to reiterate, that everybody wants it fixed, but they don't want someone's nice new driveway.
Of course, and I understand that.
So, I think that the concern is, we need to be really, really clear that
Okay.
there needs to be communication.
So, when you spoke to, you don't know if it was Chris, he probably didn't leave a door tag, Chris, he was, he's the manager. So, it probably was not him.
No, my, did you, did you get the notice from?
I don't know, sorry.
Yeah, I didn't bring it with me, so I don't know if all the fellows...
Okay. So, I can have Chris call you directly. I'll take down your phone number and your address, and I can have him explain, he'll be able to know exactly what's gonna go on in front of your house.
Mr. Chair, can I have a question?
Absolutely.
Couple of questions.
It's, uh...
One, one moment, I got it.
Just in the context of this, because it's, now we've created a fair amount of confusion. The application before the Board is about being in the public way, not any private relationships. Do you have an easement with National Grid currently?
All the properties on the street have...
They all have easements?
Yeah, I would say probably six, eight, eight...
Can you provide some narrative to the Board as to what part of this project is gonna be in the public way, and which part, because your request, this is an act, this is a public hearing relative to the public way.
Yeah.
The private way or individual relationship you have subject to your easement, and I think the Board shouldn't comment on those things that they...
Right.
I get that. But specifically, how much of this is going in the public way, and how much of this is, can you get into some detail that way? Because it's...
Well, I don't know, I mean, I could say, because usually, when we do lay any type of pipe, it's in the right of way.
If I cannot interrupt you, here's one of the things that really frustrates the Board, so I'll express it with their behalf, and they can correct me if, if I'm not correct in expressing the sentiments. Someone should not come to this Board asking for something on the Board when they don't have specific information about the proposal. And, and fans, in due respect, you don't seem to understand this project or have the kinds of details that the Board should expect, so that they can work with the neighbors around this. How many houses are gonna be impacted by the service? What is the impact on the individual residents? That's not clear.
Okay.
And, and, and for me, and I hope I'm expressing the sentiment of the Board, when you come to the Board and ask for something, and the person who hasn't designed it, or the person who's not interacting, the person who's interacting with the residents isn't the person here, it, for me, it would be hard as a Board member to want to support this when, when there aren't details as to exactly the scope of this project. How many homeowners are being impacted? How many driveways are gonna be upset? How many? It seems like that kind of information isn't clear, at least.
Okay.
Is that fair?
That's fair.
And that's kinda going back to what I said.
That's fair. I don't know...
Shouldn't and won't are two very different things.
I don't know exactly how many houses, I just know that all of these streets on this crib are gonna be affected, and everyone was notified. So, I can't tell you exactly how many homes.
And what specifically did the notification say?
You got a map, right?
I just got it from the town clerk. It's the only explanation I have.
Can I see it, Mike? Can you look at it?
That's just a notice for this public hearing.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
So, there was nothing in there about whether or not your property would actually be disturbed?
Yeah. You weren't notified by the company?
I received the letter.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, about this meeting.
It says, "The trenches will be done on the grass, except for street crossing. However, all street crossings will be done using, all street crossings will be done using directional drilling method."
Yeah, they're only gonna do that one section, though. I know that. He told me that.
Mr. Chair, do you mind, do you mind reading that? I was just going to say, if there was a notice that was sent out, just for the clarification. In conformity with the requirements of Section 22 of Chapter 166 of the General Laws, this letter, which was sent in this case to the residents, you are hereby notified that a public hearing will be held at the North Andover Town Hall, second floor conference room, second floor meeting room, excuse me, July 2017 at 7:00 PM, upon the petition of National Grid, et cetera. The following streets and highways referred to in this hearing will be Morningside Lane, Meadowview Road, National Grid to replace all direct buried cables and conduits. The trenches will be done on the grass, except street crossings. However, all street crossings will be done using the directional drilling method. The reason for this work is to replace all direct buried cables due to power failures and replace them with cable and conduits. If in the future there is a power failure, it is easier to replace cables that are already inside a conduit than trenching and splicing direct buried cables. Any questions to do?
So, it sounds to me like there is gonna be some digging along the property lines, and the only directional is gonna be under the roadways.
Only that one intersection.
But, but still, along the property lines, there's gonna be digging. So, it's not, so we kind of...
They don't, they don't mention through the driveway.
They don't mention the driveway.
You're going through the grass, you're trenching through the grass, then you come upon a driveway. It doesn't say where you're coming from.
So, you're asking him to go under directional?
Yes.
Okay, drilling. I can definitely tell them, and we'll take down your number, and we'll have him come out and speak with you.
Okay.
We'll do like a site meeting.
Okay. When will they actually, so they're gonna start the, on the 8th? And when will they actually start the digging?
I don't know. I don't, I don't have that date, because they have to wait for a civil crew to be available, and then, once they're available with their schedule, then we'll know what the date is.
Mr. Chair, I would almost suggest we leave this hearing open until we can get the correct answers to these questions, so that we understand what the true scope of the project is and what's gonna be affected. Because it doesn't sound like, I mean, so now I have a totally different understanding from, I apologize for what you presented.
No, no, I understand.
You presented that you were gonna do directional drilling in one spot and pull pipe to do the entire, the entire service. Now, I'm hearing a much different...
Well, I didn't mean the entire, I didn't know.
But I asked you a few times.
I know, but they will pull some spaces.
Yeah, well, so...
So, so we would want to understand the number of homeowners, the number of driveways, the method for drilling under driveways, the start date, the duration.
What's public, what's private in that process?
Well...
Property.
Sounds like the vast majority is actually private.
So, we're subject to an easement. Taking these questions and bringing them back to your engineer, so that they come, and I don't know if you feel comfortable with the questions, for instance, that were just enumerated by Selectman Keen.
I'm comfortable, yeah. I'll take them back to her, to him, I'm sorry, Christopher.
I think that when they did work in my neighborhood, it was, it was changing poles and so on. We had representatives who not only came to the house, they called, they wrote up a summary, and asked, you know, for us to okay that. It just seems to me, it's, it's the vagueness of it, and everyone was, "Yeah, that's, yep, that's what we're gonna do," and then all of a sudden, they come home from work and go, "Holy smokes."
I understand, yeah, I understand.
And it's upsetting. And he had a bad experience with water in the basement, which is, that's a very bad experience. So, I think it's just, as a town manager said, and I think everybody, the neighbors, everybody wants it fixed, they just don't want to come home to a surprise that they weren't expecting.
Yeah, I understand that.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Sounds good. So, they've set you to, sent us to you, sent you to us as our victim. You probably don't know that, that when we have people who come from National Grid and other places, we really drill them pretty bad, so you're...
That's okay. It's okay.
Just to let you know, it's not you.
It's all legitimate questions that need to be answered, and I just...
We're kind of, we're kind of rough.
Yeah. So... So, I'll take down your information, so don't worry.
So, we hope you will come back again.
Yes. It's fine. It's fine.
Well, and just, I agree, you should, you should speak with him, but I assume that there's other people on the street who are gonna have similar questions.
Same questions.
So, you know, you should talk with all the people on the street.
If I can make a suggestion, that when you provide... Mapping like this, you need to clearly delineate what is the public way and what is private properties. So, the graphic shows where your hardware is going, but no one can tell from the map whether that exists in the public way, which is controlled by this Board, or what is, what is subject to private property rights that individual homeowner has been owned. That's not clear from here, so it's difficult for the Board to figure out exactly what they're approving, because I don't know of all of the individual, even from the legend, I can't tell you which parts of that infrastructure are parts that are gonna go on the public way or the private way. And I think, although the Board doesn't control the private way, they certainly will have an opinion to influence what happens on private property, and so, that's not clear from these kinds of maps. I think it needs to be made more clear.
Okay.
Because my sense is you have easements, or residents have grown grass into the public way, and that if you trench those, and now I understand the issue of the driveways, you know, you have your new driveway, now you're gonna bring on an easement of what may very well be in the public way, and as you, if you trench that, you're going over that driveway and creating a trench, right? And then you're gonna backfill it and attempt to patch it. And it'd be good for the Board to understand that issue more comprehensively, to understand both the private side and the public side.
Okay, so we'll do
Thank you.
individual houses, measurements, how far in, we'll do, you know, what you ask.
And let us know where, in some areas, or where we can do directional drilling
Yes.
to cover or to, to go under the driveways where necessary.
Just on that, you, you, your subcontractor clearly won't be doing the install based on this map. So, you have the technical drawings, because the contractor would need the technical drawings to know exactly where they're going. It's okay if you give us that technical level drawings, because our staff can evaluate that and give information to the Board. So, this sort of hand-drawn thing is, we, the details help.
Okay.
Yep.
So, Mr. Chair, I move we, we continue this public hearing to our next meeting on August 14th, 2017.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none. The public hearing will continue at our next scheduled meeting.
August 14th.
August 14th.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And for expressing your feelings about this. So, let's pass it back.
So, you won't get another notification, just so you know. So, it's August 14th, it's the next meeting.
Right.
There won't be, you've got one notification, that'll be the, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, the next item on the agenda is we have consent items, and we have a request of Leslie Frazier and others to donate a tree to be planted at the town common in memory of Glenn Makin. Is Leslie here this evening? Leslie, if you wouldn't mind approaching the podium and just explaining what your hope is with this.
I'm Leslie Frazier. I live at twenty-four Cobblestone Circle. I have been active in the town since I've been here since nineteen eighty-four, had three houses within a mile of the old center, so I realize how precious the old center has been. I also have worked with Ray Santilli on a plan recently with refurbishing the common in certain ways, and we had a plan to do trees at that time. Some trees had just aged out and had gone or needed to be replaced, and there was a plan for that. So they, they did that plan, they executed that plan, and some of those trees have died. And in doing that plan, there was a little bit of a change in approach. So this gentleman, Glenn Makin, who lives on, lived on Andover Street, died at a relatively young age of ALS. He's been active in the historical society, in the neighborhood, on projects for the common, and it seemed like a wonderful way to honor him was to have a tree on the common in front of their house. We're not requesting a plaque of any kind for this. We will know that this tree is being planted in his memory, and the idea is to do it within the keeping of the plan that's already been in existence, to replace one of the trees that has already died. We're basically buying the tree for the town, and the DPW has agreed to put it in for us. So I'm just asking for your permission to do that, I guess.
Mr. Chair, I move approval.
I'll second that, I'm sorry.
Motion made by Selectmen Sodily, seconded by Selectman Valancourt. Any discussion?
It sounds like a fabulous tribute.
Very good, thank you. I have one other little tidbit.
We didn't finish this one.
So, any, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. No one opposed? Congratulations, and that is a very nice gesture.
Okay. The garden club is also interested in doing this kind of thing, to replace trees that have gone down in memories of, of garden club members who have died. So if you would keep your mind open to the fact that this might come up again with them and that they would also be doing the same thing, they would be buying the tree out of the funds they make on their plant sale or whatever, to replace trees that are going.
Would, were you, are you just considering the common or other parts of the town too?
For now, we're just talking about the common. They're already involved in Memorial Park, so they are already in that process. But this would be the common.
Because I, I do know of some areas where people have replanted trees recently that have died and we're looking for replacements.
That would be on town property, they might be in front of somebody's house, but they could be on town property, or they could be on the private property to maintain. Just something to think about, because, you know, I, I have to say, I've known Leslie for quite some time, and for people who don't know, we can thank Leslie and others for Patriots Memorial Park being redesigned and rebuilt, the Enrichment Council, she started that with Mary Ann, and many other, other projects. So I think we have a really great volunteer in our midst who's been working for quite a few years on great things for the town. Now, you deserve it.
This is the latest.
This is your latest one, yes.
So thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
Speaking of, of the generous gifts of people and groups in this community, we do have on the agenda this evening a number of donations. We have Wheel Abreater, which is donating ten thousand dollars for our trauma intervention program, so known as TIP. Jackson Lumber is donating one hundred dollars for youth and recreation, summer concert and shows. Al McGregor Fence Co. is donating five hundred dollars to the youth and recreation summer concert and shows. Lombardo Signs is doing twenty-five dollars for youth and recreation summer concerts and shows, and Fred Champy, fifty dollars to the police department for any needed service or materials. I think that we could take all of these in one motion, if...
Just to clarify, the Al McGregor Fence Company, it said five hundred, which I see in the paper, but in the agenda we got, it says fifty, so I just wanted to clarify.
Oh. Is it fifty? Okay, look at Al, probably would have been...
I was going to say, Al's probably at home calling off his chair.
I'm choking, I'm...
Sorry, okay. So I will stand, but the record show that it is fifty dollars from Al McGregor for youth and rec, summer concerts and shows.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we, as Board of Selectmen, accept the donations as previously read.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you again to all of these great businesses and residents who help support so many important programs in our town.
Thank you.
So, next we have a request of the North Andover Athletic Association to use streets in North Andover for the seventh annual Nights on the Run Road Race on Saturday, October twenty-first, beginning at nine thirty a.m. Is there anybody here this evening representing the run?
No.
Seeing no one. Any questions or discussion from the board?
Okay.
Chair, I'll, I'll move approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. We have next a request of Joseph Contrada to use the town common for the St. Vincent de Paul Friends of the Poor Walk on Saturday, September thirtieth, at ten a.m. Is there anybody from that walk or from St. Vincent de Paul to speak on that this evening? No one? Any questions or comments from the board?
No, other than, St. Vincent de Paul is an organization that just gives to the poor. You'll often see some of their members in the stores buying things, so it's a great, it's a great organization. They've been around for a long time, so, I'm not part of this group, but they're worth mentioning.
And that, that also tends to coincide, and I can't recall, is that the same date as the Fall Festival on the common later that day, or is that the week before?
I think it's close, but I don't remember.
No, it's a, no, they're not, but prior years, they've coordinated a little bit more. Okay, do I hear a motion?
Gets to my point in the last meeting, that we need a calendar.
Yeah.
I will move that Board of Selectmen approve the request of Joseph Contrada to use the town common for the St. Vincent de Paul Friends of the Poor Walk on Saturday, September thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, at ten a.m.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Sounds like a busy week on the common with our next agenda item, our busy time on the common coming up this September. So we have a request from the Reverend Kevin Deely from St. Michael's Parish to use the common on Sunday, September tenth, two thousand seventeen, from seven a.m. to five p.m. for a mass and parish picnic for St. Michael's. Is there anybody from St. Michael's here to speak on that this evening? Seeing no one, any questions or comments from the board?
No, it's a great event and they usually, in the past, you didn't have to be a member of St. Michael's to attend and enjoy the celebrations. Great, it's a great event.
Do I hear a motion to...
I mean, to the previous point, do we have a calendar? We should be checking to make sure we haven't already given this slot to someone else, I mean...
We do that as part of the process.
Okay, good. I assume we must, but just making sure. I'll move that the Board of Selectmen approve the request of Reverend Kevin Deely to use the town common for a mass and parish picnic on Sunday, September tenth, two thousand seventeen, from seven a.m. to five p.m.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Motion passes. So we have next on the agenda, a request to accept and sign a license agreement with Massachusetts Electric Company, and so it's been included in our packet regarding a parking lot owned by National Grid that the town leases, or, I believe lease would be the correct term, right? And so we have a revised agreement in our packet. Mr. Town Manager, would you spoken about this? I, I don't know.
It's been reviewed by, obviously, this is first a discussion as we looked to address some parking concerns down there and realized that the document or the license we had with National Grid, otherwise known as Mass Electric, had not been updated in quite a period of time, and both parties had an interest to do that. We'll see some additional parking down there, but they also had some concerns to make sure that when they need access to their equipment, they can have that access. So although there's a lot of sections to the agreement, I think if you read it, there's not a lot of surprises in there. Quite frankly, it's made for temporary parking, we're not supposed to charge for the parking, we can't leave vehicles there in extended periods, we can't use it as a construction laydown area, the kinds of things you think. And there's a map at the end of that that shows where the additional parking would be located to provide a few more slots. So it has been reviewed by Town Council, and I recommend the board take favorable action on it.
Move favorable action.
Motion made, do I hear a second? All circled. Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We have next on the agenda, a request to accept and sign an easement with RCG West Mills. Did I jump ahead today? Yep, with RCG West Mills.
It's somewhat similar, as part of our capital improvement program, we have a number of projects that we've scheduled, either completed or ongoing around the mill area. If you remember, we dealt with the direct buried cables down in that area as part of the decorative lighting project. Next up is to start to, or attempt to realign that intersection that the board has had to deal with in the past. That's been funded as a project, it was funded last year, and we're proceeding with the engineering, and ultimately we'll start the work on realigning that intersection so it's a little better route to travel. As part of that, in doing the engineering, we've realized that in order to realign the intersection, we need, we needed an easement from the owners of the property, which is RCG, to make sure that we can do some work on what is their property. They've agreed to the easement, it's been reviewed by council, and I'm recommending favorable action.
Move favorable action on this project.
Motion made by Selectmen Sodily, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. No one opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is an affordable housing unit resale at Four Harvest Drive, Unit Two One Six, Oak Ridge Village, Maplewood Reserve.
So, Mr. Chairman, for those members, both new and some that have been here for a bit of time, as the restrictions are placed on affordable housing units, the board owns the right of first refusal when those properties come up to be sold. The traditional practice of the board is not to exercise the right of first refusal, is to let the process sort of evolve. In many cases, these units are in fact, proceed with affordable restrictions on them. We've taken a general position that even if they don't, obviously, the board getting into the property ownership basis to preserve one affordable unit isn't practical. It would, we'd muse dollars in other ways, but, so the traditional practice of the board is to not exercise its right of first refusal as opposed, as it relates to properties that are on the market that have affordable housing restrictions on them. But it doesn't mean that this property necessarily would, wouldn't go the affordable route or stay affordable, but in this case, this development was, was an affordable development at the time it was constructed. So I would recommend that you do not exercise your right of first refusal on purchasing this unit. You probably handle three to four of these a year, I think. Pretty common.
Any questions or comments from the board?
In this case, it does not stay affordable in perpetuity, it could be...
It can.
It can.
If it doesn't sell after a hundred and eight days...
So if it doesn't sell to an affordable...
Right, then they're allowed to market it, and then the difference between the affordable price and the, and the price it sold for goes into the Affordable Housing Trust.
To be repurposed for the purpose of reinvesting in other affordable units.
Do we have to know, Laurie? Or do you...
They do sell.
That's what I was going to say, I believe that most of them do, and that you, you actually see them in multiple listing services too, as well, so...
Yep. And they're marketed for that purpose, and for most cases, if you're putting a property on the market, you don't want to wait the hundred and eighty days for not sell, without selling it. Since you know you're not going to get the sort of capital appreciation anyway, so more often than not, these end up back in the inventory. They're not dramatically changing, quite frankly, our percentage, because even if we deal with three or four of these a year, and half of them end up selling at market, it's not a game changer in terms of dealing with our affordability percentage, but if you can imagine us getting into the business of buying condos, and it's just not really that practical, quite frankly.
Just one thought, just, I'm sitting with the Affordable Housing Group here a couple of weeks ago, and just sort of the issues in the whole Merrimack Valley, it's three units in North Andover, it's two in this, and so, so when you kind of pull the whole Merrimack Valley together, are there a significant number of units, and is there a way for an entity, a regional entity, to, just, just kind of a question, just a query?
That's in essence the model we're trying to follow a little bit with the Affordable Housing Trust and the partnership with Bread and Roses, is that we're taking a look at North, obviously, we have to focus on North Andover, because in this case, you own that affordability, but what we're trying to do is look at properties, you know, one of the standards that even the CPC has held is that it's a cost per unit basis. You want to make sure that you're getting affordable housing, but what's the cost you're spending for every affordable unit?
Right.
So in this particular case, we wouldn't be in, we couldn't really add this inventory to a regional inventory. The best process seems to have been, more recently with Laurie's help, is to partner with a nonprofit concern that this is what they do, since that's not really what we do. And to identify properties where we can get the most units on a cost per unit basis as possible. Doing them one off is far more difficult.
It's cumbersome.
Yes.
It's cumbersome for the town to pick that job.
And again, it's very little risk here, because the fact of the matter is that more often than not, they stay affordable, and in the rare cases they, they don't, then the Affordable Housing Trust ends up with the, the capital appreciation on the unit to make sure that it can use that for another project.
Next time.
Yep.
Good, thank you.
So you'll see three or four, you know, two to four of these a year.
Okay.
Any other comments? Are there, entertain a motion?
Chair, I'll move that Board of Selectmen decline the right of first refusal to purchase the Affordable Housing Unit at Four Harvest Drive, Unit Two Sixteen, Oak Ridge Village, Maplewood Reserve.
Motion made by Selectmen Valancourt, do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Selectmen, nobly, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. The next item on the agenda this evening is Wellington Woods Homeowner Association is requesting a conservation restriction that we have to vote on. Wellington Woods is the property, or is the subdivision being developed right on the Boxer border, Boxer Street, right at the very far corner.
So it's not uncommon as part of a definitive subdivision plan, when, when the property owner goes through the land use boards, that there be parts of the subdivision which were deemed as, as conservation restricted. This is one of those cases, so we make sure that it's a preservation or conservation restriction on a portion of the property that will not be developed. So this has been approved through that process, and ultimately, the board reviews these for final approval. It's been reviewed by the Conservation Commission, provided to the appropriate state agencies, and reviewed by Town Council. So I would recommend you support the conservation restriction on this definitive subdivision.
Any questions or comments? Do I hear a motion to accept?
I move that the Board of Selectmen accept and sign the conservation restriction from Wellington Woods Homeowner Association Trust for Wellington Woods.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. We then have on the agenda four appointments. It looks like the Appointment Subcommittee has been busy since our last meeting, so I will defer to our Appointment Subcommittee regarding the appointment of Ronald Pallone, Sumi Dolben, Lauren Lemac, and Ron Fagan.
Yes, it has been, it has been eye opening, and, and we've been trying to put a little bit of a process to this, and I, I think both Selectman Keen and myself have really, first of all, really appreciate the kind of engagement and the level of expertise. I mean, everybody we've talked to so far, it's, it's really impressive, their enthusiasm, their desire to help the town, and really, kind of the expertise that they're, that they look to bring to these groups. And so it was hard making some of these selections. The good thing is, I think we've got kind of a bench of folks that are ready to jump in at the next, next opportunity, and two of one, I, I think, impressed everybody we've talked with. And I give Selectman Keen also the, the credit for putting together the fabulous, all on one page, everything, all, all the committees, all, all the, the terms and so forth, and just kind of makes it easier. And I think that's the other thing that we're hoping to do is, is build a little more transparency to the process and sort of hopefully continue to draw folks in, because the other thing is we're going through this, there's so much expertise and interest in helping our town. Maybe there are other ways that we can get these folks involved to, to help us, and it's like, you know, rowing, you know, rowing that ship. I mean, the more oars you've got in the water, the faster we move, and so, that's how I saw it.
I would just second thanking all the people who submit applications to serve on the different boards and committees. It's, it was very exciting to see that there are so many applications that people send in, and we are excited to meet everyone and, and figure out the best fit to leverage everyone's talents. So thank you for submitting applications.
Mr. Chairman, on these appointments, there are, there are appointment dates, expiration dates that are not provided in your packet, so more than happy to provide those so that the appointment expiration dates are appropriate when the folks are appointed. So if someone's going to make a motion, I'll fill in the blank date after they make the motion.
Because we are going to make the motions independently, because we have to, especially the constable, right?
It's fine, however you handle it. So on the, the first one, it would be through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, that's the constable vote?
What do you want me to make a motion?
Move approval.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Congratulations to Mr. Pallone.
The second, sorry, the second vote on council on aging is also through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, twenty twenty?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve appointment of Sumi Dolben to the council on aging term through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? None, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Third item on the agenda is through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Do I hear a motion for this?
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve appointment of Lauren Lemac to the cultural council term through June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations to Lauren. That's her second board we've appointed, too, she's...
Yeah.
Yeah? So the final one is for Mr. Fagan?
That's June 30th, 2020.
I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the appointment of Ron Fagan as an associate member to the Zoning Board of Approvals term through June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Ron, for taking on the ZBA appointment. Actually, thank you all. Perhaps I should defer to someone who wants to jump in and give the spiel that our former colleague used to give, but thank God for our volunteers and for the depth of talent we have in this community because without those folks volunteering, our town would grind to a screeching halt, screech to a halt.
Absolutely.
Good job. Where do you keep that going?
Great. So our next item on the agenda this evening is a FY '17 budget reallocation. Mr. Town Manager, if you would like to elaborate on.
Sure. On an annual basis, we get closer at this case, just past the end of the fiscal year, and it's our obligation as a municipal government, it's the same for the state government, that all of our accounts must be no less than zero, that we can't have any particular deficits. Given you some historical perspective, years ago, many, many, many years ago, this would require town meeting approval and so it was fairly difficult to get done a lot of years ago. And then from that, a change that it was the authority, I think the middle part of the, around twenty, between 2005 and 2010, Boards of Selectmen were allowed to move dollars with the approval of the Finance Committee in the last two months of the year. And then finally, through the Municipal Modernization Act, we got a little more modern, which allows us to get to the end of the year and really take an honest reflection of where we stood and do some budget allocations between those accounts that had surpluses and those accounts that didn't have surpluses and move those dollars around so that at the end of the year, when Lynn Savage reports this information to the state, we have no departments with deficits. That's the goal of this, that we're, as you can imagine, in any hundred million dollar business, we have line items that do well and line items that sometimes don't track as well for any number of reasons. You can see the vast majority of moving this year is moving money to cover snow and ice deficits. That's a fairly common practice. One other item was an agreement that, that I had made from a budgetary perspective with the school more than a year ago, that if the state didn't fund the kindergarten grant, which is about 105,000, that, that the board was aware of this at the time I presented the budget nearly a year ago, that we would cover those dollars because they had been sort of baked into the budget going in. That's the first line item that you have there. So this is our, what we call the shuffle, moving monies between categories that have dollars left to those line items that don't for some reason or another, so at the end of the year, we can make sure we're in compliance with state statute.
I had a question because you had, I mean, most, most of it is DPW related, but what was the, the uptick in the town clerk's office?
Some of those can be specific to either we started a project, I think the codification, whether we accounted for the codification properly, sometimes election overruns on costs.
Yeah, it's with the election.
Sometimes if we, some of the subtle costs to, to the elections, we may not know until after the election. So we plan for them and they, they come in higher than that.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other? Additional questions from the board? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll motion that we, hold on, let me make sure I get the word right, that we approve the budget reallocation for 2000, basically of 2017 as presented?
Motion made by Selectmen Valen Court. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Selectmen Swedely. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. I think we are now ready to enter into licensing. Do I can hear a motion to enter into licensing?
Move that we move into licensing.
Motion made by Selectmen Nobley.
Second.
Seconded by Selectmen Keen. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Hearing none.
Okay, we are now in licensing. So we've got a busy agenda in licensing tonight, so I'm assuming that's why everyone is still here. So the first on the agenda is a request from Wellington Fernandez for Luigi's Restaurant for a common victual license and entertainment license at 15 First Street. Is there anybody here from Luigi's to speak to this? Oh, that's unfortunate. We'd like to usually get a bit of insight on the business, but apparently they are not able to make it tonight, but that doesn't dissuade us from moving forward with the licensing application. They don't have a requirement to be present, so we can still move forward with this. So everything is in order and they do have all their approvals from, from the Building Department, Police, Fire. Everything has been approved and the manager's license is in place, so I think we are good to go with this.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would move approval, but first I'd like to say, you've done a marvelous job dressing up the front of that building. It really looks fantastic and what a nice feature to have when you're doing the farmer's market. It's like.
And I, and so we actually, we made a point of going in there very early to introduce ourselves because we know that they may have not, I would, I would think that they had expected it, but.
No.
They were really thrilled by the program. And the inside, they, they got it bad too. It's, they, they really did a phenomenal job.
You know, the awning, everything, it looks great. So pizza at 10 o'clock in the morning, it works for most people.
Well, they, they do breakfast also, so they do, they do pancakes and so some of the vendors were eager to go buy and eat, so I hope they're already seeing a jump in business.
I guess they don't have to be here to sell their business, huh?
No. Another nice means to be business.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So they have a common victuals license. All right, next we have a request of Nora Maroon, I'm not saying that right, of Nora's Kitchen LLC for a common victuals license at 166 Sutton Street. Do we have anybody from Nora's Kitchen here? Oh, come on up.
I'm going on behalf of Nora Maroon.
Okay. Well, why don't you tell us a little bit about the business, what you're going to be doing there and.
Yeah, we are going ahead because we took the place from South, Southam before.
Okay.
We renovated the place and we intend to, to start at the end of this month.
So you're going to be opening up at the end of the month?
Yes.
And, and what types of food?
Lebanese food.
I know, that's, but, but I want to know what types of food. You have the spinach pies and, and the.
If everything is fine, yeah.
That's great.
Okay. All right, so we have, the application is complete and let me just go through this. We have a approval from Building Department, approval from the Police Department, and approval from Fire Department. So all the approvals are in place. So do I hear a motion?
I move approval.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. You know, there's a very active merchants association in town, you may want to reach out to them and become involved in that.
That's why we moved over here.
Okay, well, well, thank you for coming here and good luck with your business.
Thank you very much, sir.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You're all set.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is two for Bertucci's. One of them is a change of manager at Bertucci's from Agurista Gukaskin to Mary McGrath and for, for a change to their entertainment license to include live entertainment. Anybody here from Bertucci's?
Yes.
Come on up. Are you Mary?
I am Bertucci's.
So you are the new manager of Bertucci's.
I am.
Okay. So why don't you give Bertucci's a plug on what you're doing for live entertainment and.
Well, we just recently renovated our bar area and we located to a larger venue within the restaurant and so we're hoping to capitalize on our investment there and really get some foot traffic in.
Can I just want a clarification? Molly McGrath, right?
Yes.
Oh, it's.
Well, Mary is my legal name, but I go by Molly.
Oh, okay, because your resume said Molly.
Yes.
Okay, so, but your legal name is Mary, because that's what we're approving. Okay. All right, Mary, well, that's good to know. Let's see. Okay, so it looks like all the application is in order and let's see, I believe we've got approvals. Let's find those. We've got approval from the Fire, Police, and Building, since there was really no building in, involved, there's no need for a building approval. So we have all the approvals in place and Mary's application is complete and approved by the state, I believe, so we are in good shape here.
Thank you very much.
Well, we didn't make a motion yet, so.
Could you tell, it's okay. Could you tell us what type of entertainment you're thinking of?
Primarily acoustic music, vocalists, single vocalists. We haven't really extended beyond that as of yet. It's just in its trial period right now. We've done it for about six weeks, some hits and misses.
Like everything.
You should come check it out, Thursday and Friday nights.
So just so you know that they have been operating under a valid entertainment license.
Yes.
This is a formality, our approval tonight, but it was a request earlier on and as the chairman of the, as a prerogative to approve that because they did have some scheduled entertainment coming in. So, but this is a, this is, you know, just to cross all our Ts and dot all our Is, so. So do we have a motion?
I move approval.
And I believe we need two, right?
Mary, Molly.
Okay, so we have a motion for the change of manager. Is that what, is that which one you're doing right now?
Yes.
Okay, a motion for the change of manager. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, can we have a motion for the licenses for entertainment to extend to live entertainment?
I move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, you're all set. Here, Molly. Okay. Oops. Okay, let me get to the next one. Okay, let's move to Mike's Market since they're here and nobody else is here. So we're going to take it out of order, we're going to go to Mike's Market next. A request by Mike's Market, which has just recently reopened or opened on Waverly Road, and this is a request for a wine and malt package store license at 220 Middlesex Street. Was that actually Middlesex Street that Mike's Market is on?
Yeah.
Okay, that's cool. I thought, I always thought it was on Waverly Road, but I guess that makes sense.
The doors intersection.
Kind of goes right in the corner there. Okay.
So Brian Vaughn from Smolak and Vaughn, on behalf of the applicant, which is technically JMML Enterprises LLC. I think you're all probably pretty familiar with Jim Snakis, who's one of the principals, as well as his brother Mike.
Cousin.
Yeah, excuse me, cousin.
But they're like brothers.
Yeah, they're like, it's all one big family, those guys. So everyone's familiar with the old Joe's Variety. They're, they have reopened and it's a variety store. This is for purposes of obtaining a wine and malt license so they can sell beer and wine as well from the location. I think it's a, I don't know if you've checked it out yet or not, but they did a remodel. It's really, really nice looking inside, they cleaned it up. You know, they, they've both got familiarity in, in the business and they know what they're doing. They run a good shop, they're very well equipped to handle a liquor license. I think we all know how serious this town and this board takes it and their concerns with sales to minors and I don't think you'll have any problems with, with, with Jim and Mike.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of things. It's great that the history of which was for so many years Joe's Market is still a nice little neighborhood convenience type store and it's, I mean, kids from generations can talk about how they would walk there from getting out of school or coming back from, you know, some type of event and going in and buying candy and so forth and so on. I'm just trying to get them to consider ice cream, but one thing at a time. And I'm really delighted that finally Mike got his name on a building. I would move approval.
Okay, we have a motion for approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And, you know, I, I know that your clients obviously are well versed in the, in the laws and the tip certification and, you know, obviously great business people from town and they've been doing it for years, so we don't need to go into that whole spiel as much as we would with a regular new business, but, but best of luck to them on that corner. And it is great that they reopened there and are offering a much wider variety of products too for people in the neighborhoods, because that's really something that was sorely needed in that area, fresh meats and vegetables and things like that, which they are offering. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes. Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Jim didn't even have to get up and say anything, huh? You're welcome to.
Been there, done that.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, next we have a request from Armin Javerkeneen, I don't even know I slotted that, of St. Gregory's Armenian Church for a one day malt, wine and malt license for their annual picnic on September 10th, 2017, from 12 to 6:00 and to waive all fees. Do we have anybody here? Nobody here to discuss that. Maybe that's what you're thinking, September 10th was the, also the St. Michael's picnic, so it actually kind of works out well because St. Michael's gets off Main Street and these guys get to have all of Main Street. So no one here to speak to this. Do I have a motion?
I would move approval. It's a well-known event and I think people look forward to it.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then finally, we have a request of Paul Galant from Merrimack College for a one day wine and malt license on Saturday, July 22nd, which is this week, 2017, and Sunday, July 23rd, 2017. So this is actually two one day wine and malt licenses from 9:00 to 2:00 for a road race celebration at Mendel Lawn. This is a two-day road race.
They run three, three races over the two days.
Gotcha, okay. Well, thank you for clarifying that. I should have known, the runner in the group would know that. Okay, so we have a request for two one day wine and malt licenses from Merrimack College on July 22nd, July 23rd, from 9:00 to 2:00. I have a motion?
I would move approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then finally, on the licensing, we have a, a vote to approve the revised alcoholic beverage regulations. We've had a couple chances to review that, mainly they were clarification items, clearing up our, our own bylaws, getting them in alignment with the state bylaws, renumbering some of the law, bylaws that we have, and really just, I believe, for the most part, aligning them with the states. So if you'd like to give us a briefing?
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
Since our last meeting, at the last licensing commission meeting where the amendments to the licensing regulations were reviewed, there were three changes that I've made that were requested. And one is to add to the provision with the retail licensing that there will be a clear view into the building and that is consistent with all the other license holders. The second one was there was a question about self-reporting for violations and the board requested that I remove that and so that remains the same as it is now. And so that's, the police chief will report to the Board of Selectmen if there are any reports to the license holder. And the second one was there was a discussion with the, amongst the board as to whether or not you wanted to have the alcohol curtained off or partitioned in any way when it was not for sale. And I think it was the consensus of the board to remove that section, so I removed that. And then after that, I believe that everybody, there was a consensus that it, the changes were acceptable. So if you have any further questions?
Any questions from the board? We've had a couple of times, chances to look at this and I think those three items, thank you for taking the time and clarifying those three items and clearing, cleaning them up the way we requested. So I think with, given those three items, I think everything should be in order in the way we asked for it and, and renumbered and in alignment with the state regulations. So do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, motion to accept as presented the amended regulations prepared by Suzanne Egan.
And yourself.
So we have a motion and a second from Swedely. Any further discussion on this?
Just a, just a thank you. I know that this was a lot of extra work thrown at you. I think that we hear often from business owners that it's difficult enough to do business and so any opportunity we can have with the community to streamline or make it easier to explain what the requirements are to do business in our community without sacrificing public safety is important and I think, I think you did that. So thank you for, I personally, I learned a lot throughout this and I feel, you know, better equipped to be able to speak with business owners about what our expectations are as a community, so thank you.
Thank you. And I enjoyed working with you one because you were very instrumental in making sure that they were reviewed and amended and we discussed a number of them, so I enjoyed that. Thank you.
All right, yeah, just so everyone knows, it was, Selectmen, Colagero was really the one who began this when he was licensing chair and I just get the pleasure of closing it out, so. it out, so. All those in favor?
Teamwork.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, unanimous. Thank you Suzanne.
All right, thank you.
Okay, a motion to move out of licensing?
Motion to move out of licensing?
Second.
All those in favor?
We are back in our regular meeting. Next on the agenda is old business. We have no old business. We do have some new, we have next new business. I don't ask that the board indulge me. Perhaps this would have been more appropriate under announcements, but I have built on what we've previously done and at meetings earlier this year where we've invited other board and committee chairman to come and speak with us. I've worked with Lori to extend an invitation to the Sustainability Committee, Festival Committee, and Youth and Rec Council to have them come and also give us an update on all the things they're working on and projects they have and plans they have for the next year. We'll also potentially, hearing feedback from us if there are any things that we want to see or, or projects that we want to help them with, perhaps there are opportunities where maybe we can either be more supportive of their efforts or help guide them. And certainly, I felt like it would be timely, given that we're going in, in September, into our annual public, uh, policy discussion, excuse me. So, just wanted to throw that out there and, yeah, so.
Sorry, so they would all be coming in the next meeting or they're coming in the next meeting?
Not necessarily. We have, we have three meetings between now and our budget and policy, or at least potentially our budget and policy meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
Two.
Two, if not, well, it could be three if we pick the 24th, that you've given three dates. 26.
Two, next two or three.
Yeah, pretend, there are multiple meetings between now and then. So.
Okay, good. That's great, thank you.
And that will be on the agenda, so.
I just appreciate it. It's fascinating when you start chatting with folks about what they can do, what they're looking at, so.
And some of them have approached us and been eager to come, so it's a good, good step. The next is public comment. If there's anybody from the public who would like to speak?
Brian doesn't.
Brian doesn't, look, even the town manager said Brian doesn't count. Finally, we have the town manager's report, including a discussion about what we've often discussed regarding an OPEB committee.
Sure, if I can begin by commenting on something I should have brought up through communication, National Night Out, sometimes with these gaps between meetings, we forget some items. National Night Out is coming up on August 1st, so the board is probably aware that, I think we're forward some information, but there's a community announcement, National Night Out is coming up on August 1st. Always a great event, so covers the public to come to that, that event, so I left that off through communication.
Hay Stadium, behind the middle school?
Yes.
Time? Five?
Six. We, you know, we end up showing up at five. People show up early to that event. That's an early arrival event. So, to propose the OPEB committee, sort of closing loop on a memo I sent to the board previously, if I can, give you a very brief, sort of, couple of words about what I would see as a mission statement, again, more as a framework so everybody has a general sense. The goal would be for a committee to generate, evaluate, and report on strategies and options, both short and long-term, for dealing with the unfunded OPEB liability that we've been speaking about in some form or another for quite a bit of time. Certainly, it's a problem facing every community, quite frankly, every public entity, local community in the country. To give you a general idea of what could be tasks, and these are all, again, to be determined in the long-term, what have other towns done would be a good question, you know, looking at what other communities have done in a positive way. What are the funding options? Should the town be setting aside minimum amounts every year? What should those amounts be? Where should the funds come from? So, we've been involved in a strategy, but I, but I think it really was with the support of a lot of people to make sure that we were responding in some way. That has really helped the bond rating agencies look at us favorably, but we have no clear path, right? And I think that that's the goal. How can these liabilities be best managed? What could the town do to keep the liability from growing, right? These are the kinds of questions I would expect to be asked and hopefully answered in the, in the form of suggestions from any committee that was formed. What could we do to reduce the liability, if that's possible? Simple questions like, is doing nothing an option? Right? So, that was just a general overview, what I would expect to come out of a committee. People sitting in rooms and starting to think about OPEB and coming up with suggestions, quite frankly, that will ultimately be referred back to this board as next steps, either that if they require town meeting action or if, even if they don't require town meeting action. So, that's my goal.
And what would you envision the makeup of that committee to be? Do you have some, have you put some thoughts into that? I mean, I think, you know, it's something we may decide as a board, but would you have some recommendations on what that makeup should be?
I mean, I think there are obvious players and then beyond that, it becomes a little more of a subjective conversation and I leave that to the board as it relates to the subjective component, but clearly a member of the board of selectmen should be involved, a member of the finance committee should be involved. The OPEB liability not only covers municipal departments, but, but school department employees as well, so someone from the school department, especially if there's going to be recommendations for any kind of change, that would certainly make sense.
School department or school committee?
I'd say, I, I'm going to use the term school department and then you can decide if that's a school committee representative, which is certainly appropriate, whether it's an administrative staff member or someone else. A view from the beginning that there'd be an involvement by Lynn Savage, who's the town's finance director and obviously the person who knows our, our budget and finances the best, I think that that makes most sense for that kind of involvement. It may be, and I don't want to narrow the focus on where the school should go, but her counterpart in the schools may be a good option from them, if it's not a school committee member, or it could be both. It could be a school committee member and Jim Maile, who's the assistant superintendent for business and finance, would also have, you know, some great insights. And, and then I, I do think that with resident involvement, you'd want some people with solid, this is not light of heart if you're not comfortable with numbers, right? This is a little bit of a numbers conversation in the working group, so someone who would have a solid understanding of numbers and, quite frankly, also understand what the impact of any changes would be in terms of employees. So, it also should, it's not, this is not a cold process, it's a process that needs to understand not only those things we need to do to make sure we're addressing the liability, but also understands the impacts for making those decisions. So, I would think obviously some level of resident support, but that would be a, that would be the baseline and then the board would need to decide how many additional members may come from other areas. So, that would be.
Good guideline.
That's not like a reasonable framework, but did I miss someone obvious that I, finance, maybe school committee, selectmen, finance, the staff members, you know, like a Lynn and a Jim, and I, and I don't want to put words in the superintendent's mouth, but that would give you a baseline of five to begin with. I, I view my role, not unlike my role, as relates to the Stevens Estate Group, if you can proceed with that, or other sort of larger committees, as an advisor or sort of natural member that shows up on occasion and when you need me, and I view Suzanne Egan serving in the same role, where we can provide some technical advice and some advice based on experience, but our role is more ex officio than it is permanent member of those particular groups. But I, but I'll take your direction. If you feel like I need to be in the middle of this, then that's, that's your call.
I know that I had been approached by several finance committee members who were interested in seeing us, not realizing that, seeing, seeing us move forward with this, not realizing that you had brought this up at prior meetings as well, so it seems like something that other groups are at least talking about, if not with each other. So, I, I personally, as chairman, had a tough time seeing the schedule or envisioning the schedule as you start, because I feel like it would dovetail real nicely with hearing the findings of such a committee and then deliberating over it in our budget and policy meeting. However, of course, this year's is coming up too quickly.
Yeah, this is.
And I don't know if you, this is a question I have for you, did you envision this being something that would be ready, findings would be ready by this coming town meeting to discuss, to inform you as you build your budget, or?
I, I couldn't imagine that'd be the case. I mean, it's possible, I mean, it would seem to me that, you know, it's, sorry, I struggle with the response. It would depend how quickly you get the committee together, how, how able the committee is to meet, in other words, how frequently to get into it. So, if it's a committee that can, you know, if it takes them, if it takes a month or so to get the committee to sort of together and agree and it takes, and they can meet three times over three months, you're not going to get to that kind of timeline. I think you want to do it and do it once, right? And so, I think what we're doing today allows us to be in a good spot. The fact that we're moving money into these, into an OPEB trust fund is sufficient enough to deal with everything through next town meeting, so if it didn't get there in time, that'd be fine. But if you had a committee that was meeting every week for 12 consecutive weeks and came back with this really thorough report, it's possible. So, I wouldn't, I'm not in a particular rush, I just think that this is an important enough topic that we need a collaborative, independent group to come back with suggestions. So, I built no timeline in my mind about how long it would take.
It's complex.
Yeah.
And how frequently would you expect reports back from them, like quarterly, monthly? I mean, just on progress?
Yeah, yeah, on progress.
I know we've, I've been involved in other committees before that we start and then we come back a year later or something like that. I would expect, I would want some kind of, even if it's a brief, probably from the BOS member, a brief update on.
Yeah, I think, it's a great question. I, I think it depends upon, so, so some, until there's some meat on the bone, until there's some draft of a policy, I would say at a minimum, when you see something that looks like the four corners of what would be an understanding of a policy, and certainly the board would want, I would start to engage either with the committee directly, the full board, or start to give feedback about that, because some of the things, you know, may be items that you're, that are off the table. I wouldn't want the board to sort of know that until they see what those four corners look like. So, certainly any, any board updates, it's a great benefit of having a board of selectmen on, member on there, you can give regular updates, like committee met, here's what we talked about. But I think on a formal basis, at a minimum, a more formal report from the group in total, when you're at the point that you have a general idea, here's, you know, as an example, if they're making a recommendation to have a, to update our current policy as to how we, so we, in our reserve policies, we have a method and a mechanism to fund OPEB. You know, I'm not saying it's, being the author of it, I can tell you it could use improvement, right? It was something we wanted to make sure we were moving forward with. So, when you get to that level, where you maybe have a different kind of policy or seeking amendments to that policy, if you're doing the same. So, so I would say when you have the four corners, an outline of the kinds of things you want to talk about, then that should be an interaction with this board, so that the board can give feedback to the committee. And I would see it as not just the selectmen in that case, the entire committee showing up and do a little bit of an interaction back and forth, so that the committee can go back and then drill further down with more detail.
Sounds reasonable.
And I would think the research along, and we certainly are here to support the board with my, with our staff, but I would think even the initial research, research of trying to get some, some thoughts or some specific documents about how other communities, other states have handled this kind, this may require a little bit of research to understand, I guess the good part of the, about the OPEB problem, as I said at the outset, was this isn't a Massachusetts problem, it's a national municipal issue. I would think that the group may want to hear from auditing firms, from other groups, so gaining that input. So, I think even the collection of data to review what other communities have done, which is a good starting point, that's going to take a little bit of time to get that together and to review it.
No, I, I think it would be helpful in a way to speed it up if staff could assist them and get.
Yeah, I would expect that we'd do, we'd start to do some preliminary legwork, but then we would need some direction as to, I don't want to spend time collecting data, but I think, I think we would do some preliminary legwork to try to find out through our connections, for lack of a better word, our relationships to the ICMA and other groups. Does anybody have a OPEB policy, or rephrase it in a more specific way, a strategic plan for dealing with the OPEB liability that has developed into a policy? Collect that, give it in, in unfiltered form to the committee and let the committee start to look at it and decide which pieces make sense to us. I would also say now in reflection, it would not be a bad idea to include Kathy Darby, the town's human resource director, in this, because ultimately, OPEB is about the future liability of health insurance paid to our retirees, which means it's really the future liability of health insurance paid to our retirees who are currently active employees. And so, there is an employee piece here and I think including Kathy in, in the human resource piece, she won't be the financial expert, but she can speak a little bit to the product, maybe.
I don't know, just sort of tossing this out, but it almost seems as though, I mean, some, some communities have done it so badly that maybe we need to take a look at, but to avoid too. I mean, na- nationally, it's, it's a nightmare. It's, but just a thought.
I think that's what we get to that sort of general, throw everything into the pot a little bit and the committee comes back and says, here are the things, here are the 12 things we're looking at. I think the board's reaction.
What we want to avoid.
Picky 12, but yeah. Here's the board's reaction to those eight, 10, 12, 15 things, and if some of that reaction is, boy, what's the cost benefit of that? Big, big cost, meaning impact on, you know, both personal and financial, but not a big return, the board may say that, that it ultimately may, would want the committee to focus less on that. So, I think if we can come back with that items in the pot approach and let the board provide feedback, then I think that would be a good way to, but I, I would not rush this, let's, we're sort of ahead of the curve, there's not even a, the majority of communities are not, do not have a committee. I'd say the majority of communities are not funding OPEB, and we're going to fund OPEB. So, I think we're a little bit ahead of the curve and I think we should take our time and do it right.
But the only thing I say that is, it's also educating the public. I don't think, sometimes they still don't think they have a true grasp of how this is, can be crippling to a community who doesn't take care of this.
It's very abstract, yeah.
It is, it's, it's a tough issue.
But I would see, so, but I would see the public communication piece with, when the group comes back and the board decides which, or if all, you know, which aspects of the plan they want to adopt, or whether it's all of those plans, then it's going to be incumbent, quite frankly, on those stakeholders that participated, the finance committee, the school committee, the board of selectmen and others, to start to communicate to the public about what the problem is and this is a plan to help address that. I think the committee will, you know, can assist in that, but ultimately, this is a working committee, rolling up your sleeves and coming up with a plan to address that and then I think, then trying to communicate, because it is, it's a difficult topic. Yep. So, that's.
So, actuarials, please, across.
Yes, just what you needed.
Well, so the town manager's laid out what he'd like the committee to look like. I didn't put it on the agenda for this meeting, I figured it was more sensible to discuss it, and then if we felt comfortable, I could put it on the agenda for the August meeting and then even at that point, we're then asking, I think, we'd be asking the finance committee and the school committee, or representative of the school department, to be on this. And so, even on the schedule we're on, we're not talking about a committee, because of course we'd have to solicit applications from residents, assuming this board wants to have one or more residents on there, this isn't going to even happen until the end of September anyways, I'd imagine, given the schedule we're on.
Yes.
If we feel comfortable, we can put this, this on the agenda at the next meeting based on everything the town manager said, though, and then, I don't know what protocol would be where we're talking about, the finance committee, which is a town board, but an independent town board, and the school committee, which is an independent, you know, municipal board, would we be going to them ahead of time before we create such a committee to let them know that we're doing this, or do we commit, create it and then go to them afterwards and say, hey, we've put together this committee, we'd like you to put a representative on it?
Normally, and then we can follow whatever form the board prefers, normally we would communicate with them that the board is interested in forming a committee for this purpose and with that believes that the best way for the board to do its work is to be a balanced committee that includes this general membership of which, you know, and, you know, whether it's directed, in this case, to the finance committee as an example, and we believe a finance committee representative is essential to the process, could you recommend a member of your group, you know, that would serve on the committee?
Okay.
And we'd do the same thing with the school committee, we've done that with other committees. They, normally, it's, it's less, we do the formal part, but we've already communicated with them, the school superintendents are where we're talking about this, I think members of the school committee are where we're talking about this, members of the finance committee, yeah, where we're talking about this. So, this is not going to surprise anybody, but we'd go through that process so that they have something to put on their agenda to have this conversation and select someone, because ultimately it is a vote to put a person on a committee like that. Yep, and I, and I would need to find out from the superintendent, again, so what I need really for direction is, one, does the board want to do this? And two, what's the makeup of the committee? I, I think that, again, this is a working committee, so with no disrespect to the public, it's a specific topic with, right? So, you have some, you have a member of the selectmen and a member of the finance committee, a member of the school committee, if, if there's agreement from the school side, maybe the assistant superintendent for finance, our finance director, you're at, you're at five. Someone from HR with six, one resident who has an expertise in something where they can add the value back, because this isn't, this isn't, this is the kind of thing I think we're going to get, this is not the Drummond Playground Reconstruction Committee, the lodger pool of candidates we've ever received or anything. This is not that group. So, and I don't think a lot of people would have a particular interest to serve on it. So, I, that's, if, so first, if you can agree that you want to do it, and two, how you would see the community, the committee, what the makeup would be, then we can certainly work on making sure the communication's good to the next level.
So, I would say yes, interested in formulating the committee. I think it's an important initiative and it's something that we should certainly be studying in more detail. As selectmen, as we already said, it's a huge problem that is not just in our town or state or nationwide. So, yeah, we certainly need to start looking at that. As far as the makeup, I would agree, board of selectmen, finance committee, someone from the school department, finance director, HR, and then a resident. I know a few residents that may be very interested in serving on that, I guess we all know, one or two that might be very interested in serving on that committee. So, yeah, I think that board makeup makes a lot of sense.
Is it, is it customary to, and committees like this for, given that we're creating it to identify that the board of, the board of selectmen representative serves as chair? Because I felt, selectmen committee, you and I recently served on a committee and it was a little bit, took a couple of meetings just to get the flow going, because we, we didn't, we didn't do that formal identifying of a chairman, I don't, I don't know if that makes sense.
I think what would be, I'm not sure there is a practice to it. What I would certainly suggest is the board of selectmen is putting together a committee. So, whoever the representative is, in essence, calls the first meeting. That's, then it's up to that person how they want to manage the meeting. They can be the de facto chair and start the meeting that way, whoever the board of selectmen representative is, if they want to be that person, then they in essence would be working with, making sure the meetings are scheduled and calling the meetings. will be working with, making sure the meetings are scheduled and calling the meetings. If that particular person decided that they either didn't have the time or didn't want to serve in that role, meaning that Selectmen member, they can open up to the group to see if anybody wanted to serve in that role. Ultimately, we're going to be providing the appropriate staff to make sure minutes are done, or working with that to make sure, because these are public meetings and there will be minutes, making sure the postings are done and those kind of things. So, I would say it would be expected that whoever the Selectmen representative would be, would be calling the first meeting. From that, it's up to that person to decide whether they want to say to the group, I'm going to work as chair, is everybody okay with that, or whether or not they wanted to start with a, an organizational meeting. I would leave that to the individual.
It seems sweet.
Okay. So, should we place on the next agenda a vote to establish the committee will include the outline of the membership that you've defined, and then you would vote it, and we would proceed, Larry and I would proceed with communicating with those particular individuals to have them take votes themselves, so that the committee hopefully would be put together sometime in September? Does that make some sense?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's great. So, on the rest of the items, with these are the standard month reports, I think we've reviewed most, if not all of them. Again, we're regularly updating, I did send you a separate email that we are working, I think there was a suggestion that we provide some data about website use. By the way, our newly improved website gets very positive reviews from the people who are giving us feedback. We'll continue to tweak it to enhance it in any way, but it certainly is a little easier to take on the eye, I find, a little easier to look at, a little more pleasant. Becoming the common standard, as I look around at different communities throughout the state and the nation, this format, this style is a little more common. It's also very user-friendly internally for us, it has a lot of links to our existing, to our Google platform, and as I indicated in a separate email, within about 30 days or so, I'll start providing you regular reports with our data showing what's, other activity on our website. I think you'd be surprised by the amount of activity. You know, it's not uncommon that we get 10,000 hits in a year. So, a lot of that will be graphically driven, you'll see a map of the world showing where the hits are coming from. We did get some hits from China recently, I thought sort of interesting, because I thought they banned internet access in China, so I'm not sure where that's all coming from, and we, so, some from India and some from all over the place. So, you'll see a wide range of data, and then what I would just ask from that is, some of it will be really helpful to you, and some of you'll say to me, why in the world are you sending me these? So, it's a lot of graphs and charts, but it does give you a sense of the websites that people visit most often. Good news is you are seeing an increase in the amount of hits to a building and permitting website, because we are, we are 100% live on permitting online. We're certainly ahead of what most communities are in that case, you can go online and get your permits. Luigi's was going through the permit process online, and will be eventually moving the clerks' permits, which is licenses and entertainment, all on the online product. So, folks don't need to come in, you can sit at home, get a building permit, and put it in your window, and off you go, and some of those conveniences that I think we should expect going forward in all cases are-
So, you can print out the building permit?
Yeah, we're less worried about the stock, it's still, eventually, will be a sort of automated signature on it, but if you have all the appropriate documentations and you filed appropriately, you'll be able to print that, pay the fee, put it in your window. For some reason, you can't get here, sometimes contractors are here, and that happens, but you'll be afforded that convenience, and I think what we're seeing generally is folks are, need that convenience, quite frankly. The town hall is becoming more electronic and more virtual, and we want to be as best we can, keep pace with that. So, ahead.
So, the next, I administrate the monthly reports, if there were any questions about any additional ones?
No, I was just going to thank you for some of the comments that I've made on previous monthly reports. I see that we're taking into consideration, I appreciate the additional data, and it's helpful for me, so thank you.
That's great. Well, and again, I appreciate the fact that when we, we're trying to give you information, and we do recognize sometimes that we give you information, and it may or may not be helpful, so whatever information, we produce a lot of information here, and I don't want to bore you with all the information, but we also want to make sure that that information is useful to you, and if it's useful to you, we know it's useful to someone else, and so your feedback is very helpful. So, however, we can continue to make those reports, change those reports so that they represent what you're interested in, we're certainly open to that.
I did have a question about the textile recycling, which has been-
Yes.
-a topic that, obviously, people are discussing, we rolled it out six weeks ago.
That's good.
Under the textile recycling report, we list the pounds that we're-
Yes.
-putting in. Is there a way to collect the number of households participating?
Yes, we have done that. The reporting is a little less exact, but in the first reporting period, which was the last two weeks, on both reporting periods, there's been approximately the same number of households, approximately 360. One period, 362, another period, 360. One of the difficulties is if you get duplicates, you know, in other words, a person does it two times, we didn't ask them to provide that level of detail, but if you, if you call them all independent actions, which is probably not the case, but close, early on, we've had over 700 households participate, which as a percentage of total households is pretty robust, and it's good in a way, we're finding a little bit feedback to make sure that the group is getting the bags back out to people, and they're working through some of those things. The fact that we're getting feedback like, hey, we needed a bag, we didn't get it as fast as we like, in some ways, that's good, because it's telling us people are interested. So, we continue to work with the company to make sure that they understand our community, have the roots right, and are responding appropriately. But our overall, we're on a pace to do about, you know, the tonnage pace is ahead of what the company thought it would be, it is ahead of most communities they deal with, and they deal with over 3 million customers nationally. So, it's been, it's been well-received initially, and we'll continue to work with it.
You got kudos, town got kudos in the editorial section of cheers and jeers.
Nice.
We get it as a cheer or a jeer?
Cheers.
We got a cheer.
So, let me ask you, so, we have 700, I would call them recycling events, right,
each time? Is there a way, I'm just thinking about how Chris collects data and so forth, is there a way to send a message to those households to say, thank you?
Not in the way we've, so, this was a little bit of a flyer, and we, and as reported, as the board knows, we were the first community to sign to get into this program in the entire state. So, we didn't get into some of the technical sort of nuances, I think we can continue to work with the company, I think the company is in interest, they're great partners, by the way, as we've talked to them about things. So, this is though manually picked up.
Right.
And so, we can probably work with them, we wouldn't necessarily have email addresses, because that's not, typically, you pick up the bag, you put it in, the person is logging, where they're picking up the material, not for the point of keeping the data and spying on people, so that, so that you know they've been in a certain district. The question would be, would the, would the company be comfortable with collecting data they aren't currently carrying, since there's not, you know, and then providing that data to us? Are other residents comfortable that they do that? So, at this point, I can talk to them about it.
The idea is that it's, it's trying to, you know, part of this is about feeling good about your community.
Absolutely.
And so, you become a green household, right? We talk about green certified business, why not a green certification for your household? And you think about that, and you put that in the schools, you know, the way to feed that back-
There's some way of communicating.
There's some way of communicating that, when you know people are taking these actions.
So, maybe we can start with the good old fashioned way, and that is that what they get as a response in addition to the bag is some kind of, you know, something in support, a sticker or something, you know? As long as the paper can be recycled, some kind of recycled product that does something, and we can talk with the company about methods of use nationally to try to recognize some folks that way, and then work from that.
Yeah.
To see if we can maybe change their business model a little bit, that would help them and help us. You know, maybe they've seen something, things like this, or maybe they'd be interested in reinforcing, reinforcing that concept, and what have they used, and then maybe over time, have that evolve into something that's a little more of what you're looking at, but in the short term, they get a sticker, in the short term, they get some kind of recognition, and then, and see where that leads. I think that makes some sense.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll talk pretty much about that. Yeah, they've been great, by the way, they want to, you know, they see us as a model and something that other communities can follow, so that they're, they're open-minded to creative ways that we can recognize them.
Cool.
Thank you. While I'm thinking about it, just on the aside, there was, Mr. Santilli put me in the direction of a globe article. You see, I've avoided print publications for the last several years. There's a nice article today in today's Boston Globe complimenting-
Merrimack.
Merrimack Olive.
Yeah.